Good evening to all of our members joining. We are just waiting on our chair to arrive and we should be getting started hopefully around six o'clock, six oh five. Good evening, Representative Price. We're just waiting on our chair to arrive, so just give us about five more minutes. Good evening, Madam Chair. We are just waiting to see if anyone else pops in, but you can go ahead and get started whenever you're ready.
Okay, I think we can wait about like five more minutes. I'm gonna text in the group me to see where everyone is.
That's fine, I'm taking attendance as well.
Okay, I'm pretty sure we can get the meeting started. It seems like everyone, the majority of everyone is here. I now call the meeting to order at six oh two. Um, good, good evening, everyone. Um, we'll start with roll call. Believe the office does that, or would you guys like for me to do that?
Is our clerk on the line at all? Would you like to call the roll, Madam Clerk?
You can go ahead.
You can call the roll, Robert.
Okay, thank you. Chair Zion McCain? Or McCann, I'm sorry.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Kira Johnson said she is here, but she cannot speak at the moment. Niti Kumar, our secretary.
Present.
Noah Gubin, our social media chair. Thomas Fessick. Kelly Cox. Leila Hilden.
Present.
Maya Fridas has requested an excused absence. Lauren Hopson. I believe she's on the lines. I'm gonna mark her. Lauren Hopson.
Present.
Leah Irving.
Present.
Janine Jackson. Janine Jackson.
I didn't hear my name before.
Jayla Jackson.
Yes.
Rishi Kumar is excused. Olivia Sherwood.
Present.
Priya Roy.
Present.
Hayden Kitchen.
Present.
Madison Fleming.
Present.
Just here, Rahaman, I'm saying that correctly, has requested an excused. Oh, what's the number of people we need to have a quorum, Madam Clerk? I only got eleven members on this call tonight.
How many do you have on the council?
Uh, currently eleven.
No, period, on the council.
We have a quorum. It's, I think, sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah, we have seventeen members in total and there are eleven present.
Okay. We have a quorum. All right, Madam Chair, you can move on with the next agenda item.
Okay, now moving on to the next agenda item, the opening invocation, is there anyone who would like to volunteer to do it? You can just take yourself off mute and say I'm doing it. All right, seeing as though we don't have any volunteers, so I'll do it. Please bow your heads for a word of prayer. Father God, thank you for allowing us all to be here today. Please cover those who are not here and please allow them to be able to join. Thank you for bringing us here. Thank you for making us here safely. Please cover those who were in the incident that occurred over this weekend, oh God. And Jesus, I do pray, amen. Okay, next to the next agenda, next item on the agenda, the approval of the minutes from the September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three meeting.
So you need to ask if there's a motion.
Oh, is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
Anyone can make a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Does anybody second that motion?
I second that.
Can you please state your name when you make the motions and support the motions? State your name.
Uh, Niti Kumar.
Jayla Jackson, and I state that motion. Okay, motion moved. Um, to the next item on our agenda, we will have a ten minute.
You have to do the vote, all in favor.
Oh, all in favor. Say aye. Aye, Jayla Jackson.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion moved. Next, item on our agenda is our ten minute speaker, our guest. State Representative Natalie Price. She is an American politician who currently represents Michigan's Fifth House of Representatives, district in the Michigan House of Representatives. She was elected in twenty twenty-two. Um, and she previously served as the chair, as a member of the Berkeley City Council. Please put your attention to State Representative Natalie Price.
Hello all, thank you so much for inviting me to join you this evening. This is really an honor. I'm grateful to be here. Um, I do want to apologize in advance, doing this from home with kids coming in from their evening activities and the dogs being hungry, it might get a little loud on my end. So if you have trouble hearing me, just put it in the comments and I'll, I'll, I'll move if needed. If not, I'm hoping, hoping that they'll be quiet enough for me to spend a few minutes talking to you. So in, oh, I just lost the ability to see. Oh, I'm on a spotlight. Yay Zoom, okay. I'm assuming you can still see and hear me, okay. I can't see and hear you, but that's, oh, I changed my view and now I can. You just have to be patient with us, non-digital natives. It takes us an extra minute. Oh, good, you can hear me. Okay, good. Um, one question. So I was told to introduce myself and then I was given three questions that you might be interested in hearing me speak on. What would you tell your younger self, high school age, to prepare for who you are now? One question I had, because I apologize, I don't know very much about the Wayne County Commission Youth Council. Is everybody on it in high school or is it high school and college? That might be helpful too, as I.
Everyone in the council was on, in high school from tenth to twelfth grade.
Okay, so that question makes sense. Great. Everybody's in high school, good. And I should say, as I introduce, basic information, as I introduced myself, I was a high school English teacher for eight years before becoming a stay-at-home mom. When my now ten-year-old was born, I, I left teaching to be a mom. And then I, I was elected to Berkeley City Council in twenty nineteen, but that was a very part-time job. So coming and joining the state legislature in January is the first full-time job that I have had in ten years. Um, so I wanted you to know that about me. I also wanted you to know, um, my area of Wayne County that I represent, because I assume everybody here lives in Wayne County. I represent an area of northwest Detroit, eight mile down to ninety-six, and then roughly Schaefer to Southfield. That makes up about half of my district. The other half of my district is in Oakland County. So again, coming from Berkeley City Council, I live in Berkeley. My district includes most of Birmingham, a little bit of Bloomfield Township, some of Royal Oaks, Southfield, Beverly Hills, Berkeley, Oak Park, right, is the northern half of my district, and then Detroit is the southern half. Um, so I think that's the basics in terms of introductions. Uh, the questions that you asked did get me thinking about my high school experience. Um, you know, what would I tell my high school self? Uh, when I was in high school, I grew up in Toledo, Ohio. I went to an all-girls Catholic high school in Toledo. Um, and I was, and you guys being on the youth council, I'm guessing at least a few of you can relate to this. I was very type A, scholastically determined to get all As in all of my AP classes type of personality. Feel free to roll your eyes at that. I rolled my eyes at myself looking back on it, but that's, that's a big part of who I was in high school. And I had a uncle, um, my uncle Marty, uh, he has passed away now, so if I talk about him in the past tense, that is why. I adored him in high school. He went to Georgetown and he was a very successful attorney and I thought that's, you know, who I want to be like when I grow up. And I was at my grandma's house studying so hard, going through a study guide, preparing for a test the next day, and I remembered him telling me, put the study guide down, that test is not gonna matter. And I was like, what? My Uncle Marty, like the most traditionally successful guy that I know, is telling me to stop studying? How is this possible? And he told me that when I apply for college in a few years, the college admissions officer is not going to care what grade I got on that test. They're not even gonna care that I got As in all of the AP classes. They're gonna care that I challenged myself and that I worked hard and that I um, had balance in my life, right, that I was healthy as well as driven to, to be successful. And that I needed to develop that skill of finding more balance, more than I needed to get a good grade on the test. And that was, that was, I felt, really good advice. I can't say that I applied it perfectly through high school. Um, but when I look back at my high school self, in fact, I wish I would have taken that advice even more than I did. When I think about the things that I learned in high school that I use the most frequently now, there, the skills that I learned, like having philosophical debates with my friends around my friend Cody's bonfire in his backyard into the night, right? There are, um, the ways that I learned to build relationships with people that I never thought I would become friends with. Um, those skills that I honed in high school, I use a lot more now than whether the advanced calculus, the test that I was preparing for back then and thought was the most important thing. So there's, there's my response to that question. Um, another question you guys gave me was what was your greatest setback and how did you overcome it? Um, my high school answer was uh, getting cut from the JV softball game, uh, softball team, my sophomore year of high school felt back then like earth, like it was such a big deal. I remember sobbing for days because I couldn't make the JV softball team. Softball was a big part of my identity through, through grade school and playing on the freshman team. All my friends played and they all made the team and I felt like, you know, I failed and I would never go on to do sports successfully again. Um, but how did I overcome it? When I got cut from the JV team, uh, my best friend at that point in high school lived in Michigan. Toledo, as you guys know, is right on the border, right? And I went to a private school, so we had kids from Michigan who were at my high school. And she couldn't play any of the varsity team sports because she was a Michigan resident. I don't, I don't know why that rule exists, but it did. And, um, so when I got cut from softball, she couldn't play softball, even though she was pretty athletic. We were talking about forming a JV, or not a JV, a, a club team. Um, but she didn't like softball that much. She, she was more into basketball. I didn't like basketball that much. So her brother went to an all-boys high school in Toledo and his friends were on the rowing team. And so we asked him about it. He connected us with a senior on his high school rowing team who offered to coach us. We borrowed a boat from the local rowing club and got some other kids to come and learn how to row. And we just did it. We're like, we wanna do sports, we wanna support each other, and we recruited kids and started rowing with another high school student as our coach. And it was awesome. I mean, we had so much fun. We went on my senior year to get second place in like regionals in Pittsburgh. And then I went on to row in college. Um, I was not particularly good, like my, my college, you know, we didn't have like a great rowing team and I wasn't ever in varsity rowing. I'm too short for that. But, um, the important things, right, not being traditionally successful in sports, but going back and rethinking and coming back to those relationships and doing things, you know, to support each other that we love doing together. That was, I think, a successful way to, to recover from what felt like a life-shattering setback. Um. I also, I have like a similar setback that I want to share with you was when I graduated from college. So I went to Vassar College, which is a small liberal arts school in New York. Um, and I was very, I was a double major in English and classics, very focused on academic, high-level, critical analysis of literature. I did multiple dissert, or theses, undergrad with theses. Um, and I thought that I wanted to go on into academics and become a college professor in English. And was told by the career development group, like, apply to the Ivy Leagues for college, you know, with your background and your accomplishments and grades and multiple theses, like you're sure to get in. Um, and so I did. I applied to a lot of Ivy League programs, to a few schools that I thought were safe schools, like University of Michigan and, uh, University of California, Santa Barbara, which my aunt was a professor, an English professor there. Um, and in the application process, I asked my aunt, who is an English professor, who I, again, very much looked up to and respected, if she would write me a letter of recommendation. And she told me, no, I can't, I can't write you a letter of recommendation. And I said, why? Like, I, but I've done all the things that I'm supposed to do to be able to go on and become an English professor like you. And she's like, no, you do not have this in you. Like, she said, you, you could not handle the competitive aspect of academic, academia. Um, in order to be successful here, you have to nitpick and tear people down and rise to the top in a really horrible competitive ways, and I know you. And that is not how you function and academia will tear you apart and make you miserable, and I don't want that for you. And when she said that to me, I was devastated, like, like my favorite aunt, who I admired and wanted to go on and be just like you. She's like, you don't have it in you and I'm not gonna write you a letter. I did not get into any of those programs, even U of M or UCSB. I did not get into any of those programs, even U of M or uh UCSB, my safe schools, they all rejected me. Um, and that felt like a horrible setback. But what happened? I took a year off. I went to a program that did accept me in England to get my master's degree, didn't get a PhD like I planned or wanted. But while getting my masters, I started teaching um middle school students kind of on the side to get, raise some money to help support me getting my masters. And I love teaching. And when I told my aunt that I was gonna go in and become a teacher, she was like, yes, yes. Like, take that love for literature, that enthusiasm you have for literature, share that with students, right? Like, that's much better fit for you and your personality. And um, I was very, you know, a successful teacher at uh Mommy Valley Country Day School, upper school in um Toledo, Ohio. Um, and very proud of the work I did with my students there. I I do think that I instilled a love for literature and a lot of of kids, even students who didn't necessarily think that they enjoyed reading and writing um when they came into my class. So I think my aunt was right, as much as I hated to admit it, my senior year of college, um, she was right. And I'm, I don't regret not becoming, going into academia. I will also say that when I decided to run for state rep, of course, my Aunt Beth was one of the first people I reached out to. And she's like, oh, yeah, yeah, you'd be good at that too, right? Like, it's not an easy field, but you're so cut out for it. You're passionate, you have great values, you're able to build relationships and share your enthusiasm with others. And um, she's one of my biggest supporters now as well. Um, so grateful for her saying no to me as a mentor. Um, and then the final question that you guys asked me to address is what would you do if you weren't afraid? My first response that came to mind was I would parallel park more often. Uh, it's so true, like that parallel parking is one of my biggest fears. I absolutely hate it. And every time I try to do it, I have all of the fear senses kick in and it makes me miserable. So if I weren't afraid, I'd probably parallel park more often and spend a lot less time walking long distances from parking garages. Um, but on a more serious note, um, as a mom of two kids, right? I have an eight year old and a ten year old. A lot of my fears are related to my kids, right? The world is scary. It feels scarier now than when I was a kid. I have to overcome a lot of fear to let my kids go to the local park and play on their own. Or um, you know, walk up to the corner store and buy something like it's just, and I'm in a, I feel so privileged that I live in Berkeley where those things are relatively safe for a ten year old to do. But it is not easy to let my kids be as independent as I would if I weren't as afraid. And if we could all live in communities that felt as safe as the community that I grew up in as a kid. So that's a goal, and that motivates a lot of what I choose to do as a representative, knowing that we all want safe communities for our kids to grow up in. What can we do in terms of policy and appropriations to help create those communities so that our kids can be appropriately independent and safe while doing it? So I, I don't know if I've already gone over my ten minutes, probably I talk a lot, but if I allowed to take questions, I don't know.
Madam Chair, do we have time to take any questions?
I believe so, because I have a question myself, so I wanna ask my question.
Please.
Okay, so I remember you said that you were an English teacher. Um, I went to pursue the education route. Um, I want to be a high school history teacher. So when in your, when in your career, did you say, I'm gonna take a step back and rethink this? And then when did you go into politics?
So let me just ask clarifying, when you say take a step back and rethink it, you mean going from being an English teacher to being a state rep?
Yes.
Okay. So it wasn't quite that clear for me. Um, I left teaching not because I had any political aspirations, but because I had a, a baby. For me, teaching at an independent school, I was making thirty four thousand dollars a year. And there wasn't a lot of room at that school to make more. And that was not enough money for me to pay for rent on the house that we lived and for daycare for my kid. So I left teaching before I was ready to, but it wasn't to go on to be a politician. It was just it, it, it was what we needed to do to, to not go into more debt. My husband was in school. Um, so we were racking up a lot of student debt and we moved in with his parents um for two years until he finished school and got a job. And I couldn't have done that while teaching. They lived too far away from where I was teaching and and I couldn't pay for daycare. So um, so yeah, and that's, that also motivates me. I'm on the school aid subcommittee um for the budget work groups. We call it appropriation subcommittee. And um, at fighting for higher per people funding so that the schools have the ability to pay teachers more. And also policy wise, to allow teachers to do more collective bargaining so that they can get the salaries that they deserve to be able to raise their own families at the bare minimum, right? Like, those are things that motivate me. But the next step of your question, like, how did I decide to go from being a stay at home mom to running for state rep? That was, it's, it has to do with the community. I stepped up and started becoming much more involved in the Berkeley community when I moved here with two kids under two in twenty fifteen. And in doing that, in connecting with some local community resources and organizing fundraisers and events and getting to know the department heads at the library and city hall. That's when I became interested in running for office. And it was actually the library director who saw me four days a week at the library, hanging out there with my two little kids, who said, I think you should run for city council. I think you would be really good at this. And when I thought and and dug into what does city council do? Do I wanna take that on? I said, yeah, I can step up and help represent. At the time, there were no city council members who had school age or young kids. And I was happy to be able to step up and be a voice for that, for city issues. Yeah, Robert, do you have a question? Are you raising your hand to tell me to stop? Because my time is up.
No, I actually have one question for you. Uh, for the record, my name is Robert Posky. I'm the youth council for the Wayne County Commission Youth Council. I'm the youth council coordinator. So one question for you, and I kinda want to give this question to our students that are on this call here tonight. What is the biggest motivation or what's that big empowerment that you have for students that want to pursue any kind of career, whether that's politics, teaching? What is the best kind of advice you could pass along to that student mentality or that, you know, student mindset that wants to be able to go in and have that motivation? Because I was a student once too, and I remember that motivation I got. And I remember all these students that I served with on last year, you know, that had motivation to change the world. And we still do, even though I'm a staff member. So I kinda wanna get your thoughts on that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think it goes back a little bit to what I talked about with that setback, like my aunt telling me, like, know yourself, be honest with yourself. Like, I can, she's like, I can be honest with you about the realities of this career that you think you want. But you also need to know yourself and pursue that career that's best for you, for your strengths and weaknesses. So anything you can do to get better, get to know yourself. And I am a huge fan of therapy. If you guys don't have a great therapist, like, number one piece of advice, I would not be able to do any of the things that I am doing now without a fantastic therapist who I meet with. Every other week, if things are going well, every week if things aren't, like, let's get rid of the taboo on mental health. Mental health is health and we all should be improving and getting to know ourselves better through good um talk therapy. So if you're like, ah, that's good advice, I wanna be able to do that, but I don't know how, talk to your therapist about it. That's what they're trained for.
Thank you, Representative. And I think my great question just raised up two more hands, so we're gonna let our members go ahead and ask some questions.
Yeah, sure. Uh, Olivia, what's your question?
Yes, so um, when you were in high school and you were like driven to get straight As and be successful at high school, do you ever regret any of those decisions focusing so much on your grades and wanting to get straight As constantly?
Yeah, you're breaking up a little bit for me, Olivia, but I think the question was, when I felt so driven just to get straight As, do I regret that becoming a like my, my main motivation? Is that it? Can you do a thumbs up if I got it right? And if not, we'll maybe type it in the comments? Okay. Oh, Olivia's typing. Okay, good. I'm sorry. And if I'm the only one she's breaking up for, maybe it's on my end that I'm having trouble.
I can translate if need be.
Okay.
Uh, in the meantime, Jayla, did you have a question as well?
Yes, I did. I was gonna ask her, um, like, when you were saying about the career choice and your aunt saying that it wasn't meant for you, like, do you like regret? It like, my question is directly, like, would, how do you wonder what would happen if you chose the career that you wanted?
Yeah. Yeah, so when I got all those rejection letters back from all of the, you know, English PhD programs that I applied to, I was devastated and I would have done anything to change that and go on to one of those great American um graduate programs and pursue what I thought I wanted to pursue. So I, it's a little tricky because it's not like I regret a decision. Like, it wasn't, I felt like I did everything I could have done to try to get in to do that career that I thought I wanted. So I, I, I don't, it's not like I regret a decision because it wasn't a decision that was taken out of my hands. I guess I could have like reapplied the next year and I made the decision not to do that. I decided to go and do my masters um at the British program that did accept me. But what I don't regret is the path that my career ended up taking, right? Getting my masters in English in England was wonderful experience. Coming back and teaching, I taught at a boarding school for a year, which was really hard. But again, I don't regret it. I learned so much in that experience. Um, and then going on to teach at the day school in Toledo. It, I felt like there was a lot of meaning in that work when I was a teacher. And I wouldn't have given that up even to go and say I'm, you know, a PhD or publish a book. The, the things that I thought I wanted, if I had to choose now between making that meaningful impact in students' lives versus having a book published, right? I'm glad that I got to make the meaningful impact in students' lives and I would give up publishing a dozen books now to have the, the career and the experience that I got. I see that the, something came into the chat. Olivia, did you ever regret stressing yourself out so much with your grades in school? Oh, there we go. Yes, absolutely. Yes, I did. I think that stressing so much on getting the best grades possible, I do have regrets about that. One thing that I identify about my high school experience, and I compare it to my brothers. My brother was two years behind me in high school. Um, and he could have cared less about grades. Like, he, I judged him. I treated him horribly when we were in high school, by the way. We have a great relationship now. He's a psychologist. And I, I, I talked to him weekly uh about all kinds of things. We're, we're good now. But I treated him horribly in high school. I was so judgmental of him. I felt like he didn't care about grades. He didn't care about any things I cared about. He didn't have friends. He had these two friends that I thought were total losers. And I was like, oh, you guys just hang out playing video games all day. You're never gonna do anything. I mean, I was horrible to my brother and we were such different people, where I had a lot of friends. But, but I didn't have really close friends. And my brother, those two losers that he hung out with, they are still his best friends today. They still live close to him and he sees them every week and they support each other and they're each other's families. And now I am so jealous of my brother's high school experience because he did things that brought him and his two best friends so much joy. Okay, playing video games, I can't relate to that bringing me joy. But he had fun and he developed really deep relationships that he still relies on today. And yeah, I got good grades and I got to go to college and I developed some good friendships in college with folks I still stay with. But if I look back just at high school, I'm like, oh, I wish I would have spent less time stressing about grades and spent more time around my friend Cody's bonfire, getting to know my friends better. And maybe I would have them still as friends instead of just like acquaintances now. So there's a regret. That's very true to me.
Are there, um, any more questions?
I would just like to thank the representative for taking the time to actually come and speak with our students, our passionate students that are here today, serving on the youth council. We appreciate you being here. I'm gonna pass it along. Does anyone else have any remarks or questions?
Well, thank you so much for inviting me. Um, very honored to be here and uh happy. And if there's anything I can ever help with, with your youth council, or if you guys ever have individual projects, things you're working on, ideas that you have for legislation, you know, feel free to reach out anytime. Um, you know, you can Google my name and state rep and you'll be able to find all of my uh contact information. So never hesitate to reach out.
Would you be able to put your contact information in the chat real quick for our students?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Representative.
And Representative, this is Commissioner McCormick. I want to thank you again. You always show up every time I ask. So I really appreciate you. And we will be in Lansing uh in March for our advocacy day. So uh we will reach out to you and give you all of those details, okay?
Fantastic. And if I can help, one of the things I can offer when you guys come for advocacy day, if you want a room, like the Meconah Room or a conference room, just to kind of have it as a, a base in the House Office Building, let me know and I can put in that request from my office. So you guys can have a space to put your bags and go back and chill in or whatever. Um, just give me the date, send it to my office and we can reserve a room for you.
So Robert will be reaching out to you for that, because that, that would, that's exactly what we need. So thank you so much.
Easy, glad I can help. All right. I look forward to seeing you guys then.
Yes, thank you again, um State Representative Natalie Price. Um, now we will be moving on to our next item on our agenda, which is old business. Is there any old business that we need to go over?
No old business.
Okay.
Item.
Next item on our agenda is new business. Um, the Wayne State Advocacy Training on November eleventh, twenty twenty three.
Yep, that, that would actually be me, Madam Chair, to kinda go over that. So uh just for notice, uh, we will be having our Wayne State University Advocacy Training on November eleventh, twenty twenty three, from five PM to seven PM. It'll be at the Wayne State University School of Social Work, which is located on five four four seven Woodward Avenue in Detroit. So that would be midtown area of Detroit. Um, if anyone is not able to make that specifically, uh, please reach out to the Wayne Youth twenty twenty email or just shoot me a text if you can, and we can mark you as excused for this meeting. And that's all I have for that one.
Um, also, just to um clarify what advocacy training is, uh, basically, it's just a lesson on uh basically, it's just a lesson on how we go about uh fighting for an issue or, or advocating for issues. So whatever topic you guys decide to work on uh for your resolution, then that topic, we're going to take that issue and go to Lansing and talk to elected officials about that issue and advocate for change. So the training is basically going to help you with uh understanding how you advocate for an issue.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. And that's all I have for that item. We can go ahead and move on to the next item in new business, if you'd like, Madam Chair, which would be the permission slips.
Yes, so the discussion over permission slips, I believe I passed it over to Robert as well.
Okay. All right, let's see here. Can everyone see my screen? Please give me a thumbs up. Or if no one has their camera on, just please, just say yes.
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 So uh as you can see on my screen, it's just our, our permission slip for our Wayne State meeting, which will be on the eleventh. Uh, this is just to have consent from your parents to uh drop you off for our meeting uh for our day or for our two hours at Wayne State for our meeting. Um, I'm gonna go through it just in depth, just go through the basics of it for all of our new members, for some of our old members, you're more than welcome to list it in because you have received this before, including myself last year. So this kind of just gives you the date and time. It gives you the address, gives you the time, gives you the date. And then the method of transportation would be obviously your parents, or if you have someone to drop you off, that's also okay as well. Just make sure that everything's cleared up there. Um, it'll be dropped off and picked up promptly. So make sure that you're there at five o'clock right on the dot so we can get ready for our meeting and we can also have form for that as well. Um, it's just basically advocacy training, like the commissioner had said. Uh, we're gonna go through in-depth training on how to advocate for issues. So for example, if someone's passionate about an issue, let's just go here, example, I'm passionate about politics and infrastructure, climate change. That is an issue you're gonna advocate on and we're gonna actually get into this later in our ju- our agenda, but um we're gonna discuss how to advocate for an issue you are passionate about or what the council, which we are on, has worked on for the past year. So this is what this meeting's gonna be really geared to and it's gonna give you in-depth training on how to i- issues of advocating and lobbying this issue as well. You're gonna be able to lobby in Lansing as well. So I'm gonna start from our section here where it says, please sign and return this form. I am the parent or guardian of, using example, Zion McCann. Uh, the student has my consent to participate in the above described activity. The student's participation in the activity is voluntarily. As provided above, I understand that I must provide transportation for the student to and from the activity, or I give my permission for the YCCYC to transport the student to and from the activity. Adult supervision with, will be provided for this activity. I have advised the student that he or she must follow the instructions of the YCCYC administrators while participating in this activity. I waive, release and hold harmless to the Wayne County Commission Youth Council, Wayne County Commission and their officers, officials and employees, volunteers, agents and successors for any liability and damages such as injury that may result from participation in the activity. In case of an accident or illness, the YCCYC administrators, myself or the commissioner have my permission to seek emergency medical care or treatment for the student if such emergency has occurred. And then you would put your name of the parent or guardian printed and your signature from your parent or guardian dated with an emergency contact added there as well for any issues regarding that we have. Does anyone have any questions regarding the permission slip? And if they do, any parents specifically, please email me or reach out to me by cell or reach out to our office with any questions. Now, does any members or executive team have questions for me? Seeing none at the moment. Madam Chair, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it back over to you to control the rest of our, or go on to our next agenda item for the meeting.
Thank you. Can you um change your screen back to the agenda, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is the discussion of resolution topics. Um, new topics that were brought up this year, um in your applications, you were asked to write a response on a topic that you believe that was prominent um amongst Wayne County youth. Um, the new topics that we got, were received were LGBTQ rights, climate change, substance abuse and mental health. And then previous topics that we have done resolutions on is gun reform, econo- and economic oppression. Um, so we will start and out by the attendance. So Thomas, um, do you have a topic and why you believe we should write our resolution on that?
Uh, I don't think Thomas is here. He was marked excused, so.
Okay. So who's, cue scroll back, back up to the agenda, I mean, the attendance part of?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Is Kelly Cox here?
Uh, Kelly is also absent.
Okay, um Madison Fleming?
Madison is here.
Okay, Madison, um, can you take yourself off mute or put it in the chat? Um, what you believe our topic, the topic for our resolution should be and why you believe so?
Um, can I get like a little bit more time to think about it?
Um, absolutely. Okay, next on our list is Maya Freitas. I hope I said that right.
Maya Fridas, she's actually excused uh for this meeting.
All right, um Noah Gubin?
Noah is also excused as well.
Okay, um Leila?
Leila is here.
Okay, Leila, do you have a um topic and why you should believe that our resolution should be on that? You can put in the chat or take yourself off mute.
And this should be a discussion, so rather than putting it in chat, just um tell why it's important to you uh that particular issue. Unless, of course, there's some tech, technical issue, then of course you can put it in the chat, but it's uh it'll be easier if you just tell why the issue is important.
Leila, can you hear us at all? I think she might be having some tech issues. Can we come back to her?
Okay, um Lauren Hapsin, are you here? Okay, Leah Irving? Okay. Jayla Jackson?
Yes, hello.
Hello, okay, we can hear you, we can hear you.
Can you repeat the question?
Um, so we're discussing the topic of our next resolution. So is there a topic that you have in mind and can you explain why that is important to you?
Um, childcare. And I think it'll be a perfect topic to um speak on because it's really important, especially nowadays and in our generation.
So I think the uh question is misunderstood. So there's items on the agenda. Um, if you can go back up to the items, if you look at the three or three items for new topics for this year's year, those were topics that uh the majority of you talked about in your essays. So of those three items, you can pick from this year or we can look at the items from last year. So all you're doing is looking at the items that you see on the screen, new topics for this year or previous resolution topics, and pick which one you think is most important to you, and then you tell why it's most important to you.
Oh, okay, I understand the question now. Um. Substance abuse slash mental health, I feel like is a very important topic because it's really deep. Nowadays, people are overdosing off of new substances that haven't even been discovered, discovered yet. And it's mostly the economy and just the generation. So.
All right, Jayla, thank you for that. Um, next on the list, I believe was Janine Jackson.
And Robert, make sure you take notes as to who said what, you know, for which topic that's most important.
I am taking notes as we speak.
Great, great.
Okay, I agree with Jayla. I feel like substance abuse slash mental health will be a good, um, I'm sorry. It would be a good like resolution or, you know, a topic for this year because it's not really suppressed to one group. Like, oh, it's not like just chi- children experience substance abuse or mental health, they're just older people. It's like a wide, it's like a wide, um, I don't know the word I want to use, but it's a wide like variation of people who experience it. So, yeah.
A widespread?
Yes.
Is that the word? Okay.
And also, when you really think about it, like there's other topics that we can manage to fit into substance abuse and mental health. Like, you know, two birds, one stone. So, yeah.
I like that, Janina. That's a really good point.
Okay, Robert, keep scrolling back up to the names, please. Sorry.
Absolutely.
Okay, next is Kiera. I believe she said she couldn't speak, so.
We could try at the end if she's available, but yeah, let's just give her some time.
Okay, um. Noah said he's in the waiting room.
Let me check that real quick.
And Leila just put in the chat, so I'll just read that out. She said, my computer is glitching. I can partially hear what you are saying, but my, my microphone is not working. While I think all of the topics proposed are very important, I wrote my essay on climate change. I still believe that climate change is still an extremely important topic. Um, it's see, it's something that is affecting that, that affects everyone across the world and will continue to become more of an issue if not taken care of. I think that the more we wait on taking charge of the issue, the more difficult it will be to prevent, to prevent further damage.
Thank you, Leila. I like that very much.
Okay, um, we said we're gonna track here at the end. And then Nidhi Kumar?
Um, personally, I think that we should do uh topic three, which is substance abuse, adding on to what previous people have said, um, especially like after like, not just COVID, but also like the inflation crisis that we had like a while back. Those uh times of stress kind of contribute to like an uptick in people like in, like abusing substances. And especially with like the youth population, you often see like a lot of vaping or um, and especially like underage use of uh marijuana, especially after it was legalized in Michigan. So those are like some things that we could probably focus on and I feel like that would be more of a current issue.
Thank you, Nidhi. I love that as well.
Thank you. Um, next is Rishi.
He's not here. He's
Okay. Um, oh, next is me. Um, I agree with um, I agree with everyone on the substance abuse. Um, that is very prominent, not just in Wayne County, but amongst a lot of youth, youth, um, like Nidhi said, with the underage use of marijuana and vaping. Uh, I believe that is a very prominent issue amongst youth and especially in Wayne County. So, yeah, that's my take on it.
Madam Chair? Is substance abuse?
Yes.
Okay.
And next is Priya Roy. Is she here?
Uh, yes, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I chose mental health because I think it is an essential part of our overall health, including like it affects our emotions in a certain ways, about how we think, feel and how we connect with others. Good mental health can be valuable to us because it can help us cope with challenges and what I've noticed especially among teens these days is that I feel like a lot of the times students don't open up to adults or people that they think they can share it with. And because of that, they take loads and strengths of their own. Um, along with that, taking care of your mental health is an essential aspect of your daily life. And taking the time to take care of yourselves can be valuable. At the same time, I think it should be a topic that's, that students should be aware of and taught in school. Uh, yeah.
Thank you, Priya. Um, I actually really liked your response. That was a very
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is Olivia Sherwood. Is she here?
She is. And she was having connect uh connectivity issues too. So Olivia, if you want to put that in the chat, that is totally fine. We can read it off for you and we can go to the next person.
Okay, so the next person is Peyton Kitchen.
I think that we should do, um, I'm kind of actually in between two, between substance abuse and climate change. Because I feel like climate change is one of those things where it's like, we won't have like an earth to live on in safe conditions unless we truly do fix the things that are going on around us. But then also substance abuse is really big and it's thing, something that's also affecting teens as well. So I think for the teen aspect, we should do substance abuse.
All right, thank you, Peyton. I believe, I, I think that everyone is kind of conflicted. Um, once uh Leila put that in the chat, it definitely opened up my perspective to climate change because I didn't even think about it. So, thank you for that. Um. Olivia put in the chat, I heavily agree with number three with the substance abuse slash mental health. There needs to be more access to the youth today regarding those problems. The youth needs to understand that there is more, wait, hold on. It's kind of hard to read and scroll. Um, okay, the youth needs to understand that there is help available to them and making it more accessible uh will allow for improvement of their mental health and making sure that the youth know that if they need help, there is people that can help. Substance abuse is a big issue with the youth today. Take, talking from experience from with my own high school, the youth use the substance thinking it will help with their mental problems. In my personal experience, I have unfortunately, I have unfortunately seen lots of pro problems with substance abuse among my peers at school and making sure that the youth understands the full effects of it rather than short, whether that be short or long term. Um, yeah. I agree with that, Olivia, and I appreciate your um connection between mental health and substance abuse, kind of bridging the gaps.
That's a good point, Olivia. Great, thank you for that. That's really enlightening and insightful as well. Okay, so we believe that we have to go back to Madison and
You can type yours out. Um. If you are having issues in the, you can just type yours out in the chat and I'll read it. It may not be like the most fluent reading, but it, I'll definitely read it for you.
It works either way.
Yeah.
Well, those are only three people I believe that we had. Yeah, because everybody else was out, so we don't have full participation in this, but we got some members giving great responses, so it's just those three left.
Um, I'm ready.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Um, so I agree with everybody else. Uh, I um, I think mental, like, mental health is a very important topic, especially am- among
Is a very important topic, especially amongst like teens and, uh, youth. A lot of, you know, teenagers and children like suffer in silence and turn to like. Substances, like other drugs and stuff to cope with like what they're going through, so like. Um, I don't know, maybe we can speak on like ways to where like how like kids can like. Cop better with like what they're going through and, yeah.
Thank you for your perspective on that, Madison. Who else was waiting on, it was Madison, Noah, and then?
Hmm, Noah is actually not on this call. Oh, yes he is, I lied.
He's out in the chat, so.
Okay, I, let me change the attendance sheet real quick here. Alright. Sorry Noah, we forgot about you.
Um, Noah is not. Sorry, Noah's having technical issues, that's why he's probably, he, uh, might be typing it out.
Yeah, I believe it says so in the chat.
Okay.
Um, so he will probably send a message, message through there.
Okay, um, what I can propose here is if students cannot get anything into the chat this evening. Send it to me in an email and I can share it to our chair and then she can post it in the group if that makes it easier. Or you guys can do it on your own and post it in the group me and kind of discuss it through and then you can email it to me. That might work best for certain students that have technical issues.
I'm fine with that, if everyone.
Okay, alright, I'll make sure to add that on here. Okay, so Noah, I'll make sure. You get your response over to me and I'll make sure it gets out to the group, so when we do have our next meeting on this discussion, we can. Talk about it more in depth, so everybody's in the loop, and for all of our members, we'll also, that are absent, we'll kind of run this by them as well. Other than that, um. Who's next, we have Leah and Lauren, are they typing theirs into the chat?
Are they present, I remember somebody had an excused absence.
Uh, Lauren's here, but I do not see. Um. I don't see Leah.
I can see Leah, she's right there, but she's in my screen.
My screen is split, so I'm trying to work this out. Okay, um.
Well, Leah or Lauren, would you guys like to, would either of you like to come off mute and share your thoughts with everyone? Or you can type it in the chat.
And just for the record, we are not calling a vote on any of these topics, this is just a discussion we're having, so. If any members want to have a further discussion on some of these topics, we can do so for a short period of time. Does anyone have any follow-up thoughts on any of the resolution topics at all? Kiera?
Oh, hi guys, okay, so, I can talk, but, okay, so I'm back. But I just wanted to put my input that I think we should do the substance abuse slash mental health. And I think they both tie into each other because nowadays, um, children or teenagers on mental health. Use substance abuse as a coping mechanism, short-term relief of substance abuse, solving their mental health problems, so that's just my.
I have a question.
Go ahead, thank you Kiera for, um, sharing your insight, I agree with you.
Okay, so was substance abuse slash mental health supposed to be two separate, um, topics or? Oh, okay.
No, these were not two separate topics, when we put out these topics, we were gonna tie them in from the applications we received. They're kind of combined together in most of our topics we received, so. We just decided to put it in there, so, because it does go hand in hand, and Kiera. Does make a great point that I agree with, it does tie into it because a lot of students. Suffer from mental health issues in Wayne County, but not just Oakland, McComb. And there's not a lot of resources and they do resort to substance-related, uh, issues because of that. So we wanted to make it easier and kind of tie, keep, like you said, to kill two birds with one stone. Um, if that kind of answers your question.
Yes, it did, thank you.
Absolutely, uh, Madam Chair, do we have a response from Leah and Lauren at all?
Hmm, no.
Okay.
Maybe there are technical difficulties and they plan on texting in the group me.
Okay, for the sake of time, I'm gonna give them the opportunity to do that in the group me, or they can shoot me an email. And whatever topic they have, we'll add it to our list. To be the sake of time, because our meeting does run till seven thirty, so I kind of want to be respectful of people's time, but. If they do have an idea, please send it to me or send it to our chair in group me, so. Everything is kind of squared away, and we'll also fill in our absent members as well. With that, does anyone have anything further on our topics, any follow-up thoughts, any questions that I could answer or our chair could answer? Going once.
Okay, Noah said he's gonna send his in group me.
Okay, perfect, going once, going twice, final ball. Okay, Madam Chair, the meeting in the floor is yours.
Alright, and our next, the next item on our agenda is announcements by members, does anybody have an announcement?
I have a one announcement for you, Madam Chair, for all of our members. Uh, we appreciate you getting that contact information to us to make sure all your parents and. You as well are in the loop on everything, so if you do have another email that you do change throughout the year that we have an issue. Just make sure you send that to us, we, we can add you on our email list, so you guys and your parents are receiving all of the updates going forward. Second thing I'd like to mention, we nearly did not have a quorum today, so. For all of our members that were absent, I'd like to ask our vice chair and our. Regular chair to make sure the students that were absent in this meeting. And I'll send you the list, so you have an idea to make sure that they're aware of what we had talked about in this meeting, or. Our secretary reach out with them for the minutes to make sure that they're in the loop when we come to our next meeting, and that's all I have going forward.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, next item on our agenda is our next meeting, which is November eleventh, twenty twenty-three. From five to seven at Wayne State University, um, the School of Social Work, five four four seven Woodward Avenue. Detroit, Michigan, four eight two oh two, um, that'll be our next meeting. Any questions about that?
You repeat that as you join.
Um, our next meeting is. Do you like these? Our next meeting is November eleventh, twenty twenty-three, um, from five to seven at Wayne State University, the School of Social Work. Um, the address is five four four seven Woodward Avenue, Detroit, Michigan, four eight two oh two. Any questions about that?
Is this the same building we went to last time?
Yes, this is the same building.
Okay.
Um. Robert, is there a certain dress code for that meeting, or just business casual?
Regular business casual, it's not our commission meeting last year, so, which shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, just refer to the code of conduct for any dress casual related issues regarding that meeting.
Okay, um, next item on our agenda is public comment, um, does, are there any public comments? Okay, I guess not. And the last item on our agenda is adjournment, so do I have an motion to adjourn this meeting?
I motion to adjourn this meeting.
Anybody second this meeting, does anybody second the motion?
I do.
I, in the motion.
I do.
I do.
Okay, can we have a vote to adjourn the meeting?
Wait, um, who was first on the?
Can people say their names, so we can write this down?
Yes.
Hi, Janine Jackson, motion to adjourn this meeting.
Okay.
Hi, Janine Jackson, second to adjourn the meeting.
Now, all those in favor of adjourned in the meeting, please say aye.
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 Okay, meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody, take care.